Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Schleckman. I am the vice chair of the Arlington School Committee. Dr. Allison Ampe is with us tonight remotely, so I will be chairing the meeting. This is the meeting of February 29th. Happy Leap Day. We are operating remote. We are operating with remote. We have a hybrid setup tonight because Dr. Allison Ampe is on hybrid. Just a reminder to everyone that under these rules, we have to do all roll call votes. And I will ask the people who are on remote right now to respond. Dr. Allison Ampe, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and Jenna Mederos is our AEA representative. Can you hear us?
Hi, yes, I can.
Okay, so we're in good shape. Reminder to anybody who is interacting with us through the wonders of Zoom that if your mics are on or your cameras are on, we can see or hear what's up, so please be aware. First order of business will be a moment of silence. Unfortunately, we have learned of the tragic death of our former town clerk, Corinne Rainville, who is somebody we've all interacted with, who is a consummate professional, a wonderful friend for us all. And for me personally, we shared a birthday. And so I always made it a point to wander by Town Hall on that date just to celebrate with her. It's a tremendous loss. And so a moment of silence for Corinne, please. Thank you. And now for public comment. We have nobody in the room and nobody has signed up for public comments, so we will move on to the Arlington High Student Representatives. I have one on the list, Amy Chiraloo. And you'd want somebody else with you, right? Would you pull down the microphone and introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Ashra. I'm the vice president for the class of 27.
Congratulations, welcome. Do you have a report of what's happening in our beloved high school?
Yes, I don't know if anyone had the pleasure of going to the All-Town Concert last night, but everyone from grades elementary school up to high school did fantastic. The opening of our new school café was on Tuesday. If you guys want to cross over the little concrete ramp and check it out, I would very much recommend it. The dumplings are fantastic. And not the last, uh, last but not least, I'd recommend checking out the AHS Zoo. Most recently yesterday, we got an axolotl. And there's tarantulas and cockroaches and goldfish and anything, anything you'd really want to see. So I would recommend going to the fourth and fifth floors of the steam wing to go. Checks out some animals, but no petting. Not that kind of zoo.
I don't think you want to pet the cockroaches, do you? Okay, anything else?
I want to shout out gymnastics for having a record-breaking season and breaking their own record in points, not once but twice in this year.
Excellent, wonderful, thank you. Next up will be field trip approval. Dr. Janger or?
Mr. Barasa.
Mr. Barasa.
Speaking to this.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much for having me check in with you. I appreciate your patience and the time you're allotting me. So we have officially been formally invited back to visit our sister city Nagasaki, Japan. As some, if not all of you, know, I first was involved in the trip in 2010 and I spent two years as, you know, one of the exchange teachers in Nagasaki. So I miss Sonoe Toyama and everyone in Nagasaki is just very, very important to me. As I know, you know, we all have different, just really lovely relationships that we've all developed through the Sister City Exchange Program. As you know, it's the 40th anniversary of the Sister City Relationship and the 20th anniversary of the first time we successfully completed a student exchange. So we understand that it is late in the game, but we just heard back, I think on February 13th or 14th, from any travel agent that we reached out to with an actual price point and itinerary. We have only gauged interest so far because we're obviously waiting for the trip to be approved. But we are requesting the opportunity to go back. Ms. Toyama has formally invited us back for a 10-day stay in July. So we have the information that we can answer questions. I don't want to belabor the point. I'm happy to keep talking, but I know you have plenty of other very important things. So I'm happy to answer questions you might have or continue talking about the trip if that's the easiest thing for you.
It's a delightful time of the year to be there for the wonderful July weather in Nagasaki.
It's about 6,000 degrees with 500% humidity.
Yeah, that's basically what it is. It's like Alabama in August. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, do I see a motion?
It's moved.
Motion by Mr. Thielman, seconded by Liz Exton. There are too many Lizs in this room. Seconded by Ms. Exton. All in favor, roll call. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative.
You forgot Ms. Morgan.
I can't see you over there. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
We need a curve. And I vote in the affirmative. That's a 7-0 vote. Congratulations. Is Dr. Janger going with you?
He is scheduled. So I'm currently not planning on traveling myself only because I'm working out a little blood clot situation. And flying that long is not advised. I'm hoping to return next year, but I'm going to be setting everything up, language and culture classes. And he's very excited. And Ms. Toyama is incredibly excited to have an administrator visiting.
Oh, yeah, he will be treated like a VIP. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Next up is the literacy screening update with Dr. Ford Walker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am here to present a brief update on the literacy screener process for the district. As of July 1st, 2023, Massachusetts regulation states that all schools require, are required to screen all K-3 students for early literacy skills. I've shared the regulation here just for your reference, but basically the summary is that school districts shall assess each student's reading ability and progress at least two times per year. If screening determines that a student is significantly below benchmark for age typical development and specific literacy skills, the school shall determine which actions within the general education program should be taken in order to meet the student's needs. And this may include differentiating instruction or providing a supplementary evidence-based reading instruction program and ongoing monitoring of progress. And also, within 30 school days of screening, results are, if the results are significantly below the relevant benchmark, then each school is responsible for sharing that information with parents and guardians and also having a follow-up conversation with the parent or guardian. The early universal screening assessment tool that we use here in APS is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, or what is known as DIBELS. DIBELS are measures used to determine how students are performing on specific skills. Skills that are measured include phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency vocabulary, and comprehension. The tests are indicators of the student's overall reading status and are not intended to be an in-depth analysis or a comprehensive measure of reading. And administration of the DIBELS assessments typically takes about one to three minutes per assessment, per test. This year, our testing window for our first through third graders was September, January, and the third window is scheduled for June. For our kindergarten students, the window was November and then also in late May or early June of this year. And all students in grades one through three are given the test three times per year, as well as two times per year in kindergarten. And just to share a little bit about the process that we use here in APS, typically after a test is completed, there's a Home Connect report. A Home Connect report that's generated for all students. And the Home Connect report shares student scores and provides information about whether or not a student is on track for reading success. And students that are in need of academic support are identified as a result of this process. And students who are not in need of support also have areas identified, areas of support, we call them. At the beginning of this academic year, only students that were identified as performing well below the benchmark received a Home Connect report, and that was sent via US Mail. After the second administration, this winter, students who were identified as performing in that category of well below, as well as students who were performing in the below category, received a Home Connect report. And at some schools, all students received a Home Connect report, no matter what their performance was. After the third administration, in the summer of this year, all students within all seven elementary schools are going to receive a Home Connect report. And follow-up discussions with families of students in the well below category usually begin at curriculum night and they continue through the parent-teacher conference process that each school engages in. And there's a communication that is ongoing between teachers and students based on student progress and based on growth. And often, members of the school team will reach out to families to continue the conversation, as well as to continue the planning that may be needed for a particular student. This is an example of a Home Connect report, which is pretty detailed in terms of student performance. And based on the data typically from this assessment and student performance, schools use that to determine which actions within the general education setting are needed to meet a student's needs. This may include differentiating instruction or supplementing reading instruction. And student progress is monitored by school teams and teachers who review that student information and work together to respond to that information. Teacher teams discuss progress and opportunities for small group instruction in response to the data as needed. Also, in response to the student data, teachers utilize a student support model that exists in schools in order to further the conversation with special educators and additional interventionists at the table as well. And student benchmark data are documented within the APS Amplify dashboard that exists and available to all teachers. And progress monitoring of that data is collected and shared with teacher teams within schools. All students in K-3 are screened using the DIBELS. And students that are found to be performing below the benchmark of DIBELS may take additional assessments or screeners to determine specific areas of need. There are generally four other screeners that are used in addition to DIBELS for students that may fall in that particular category. And also, a student that is found to be in supplementary reading instruction need may participate in one of these eight programs that is offered and offered by our reading interventionists. A goal of the Teaching and Learning Department is to have all Home Connect reports available to all families via an online portal beginning next school year. And this would provide our families with easier access to this information, as well as remove some of the barriers that exist as it relates to US Mail or snail mail. And we've encountered a number of challenges to actually identifying a portal that exists. But we are pretty encouraged by some of the conversations that we've been having specifically with Amplify. And we think that we will be able to reach this particular goal by fall of next year. Some of the next steps also include making sure that we're identifying all of the processes that the district is currently using in a clearer manner for families and making sure that the processes that are used are consistent across all of our elementary schools. And finally, we're looking at how we can ensure that these reports are providing meaningful information and accurate information for families as well. I've received a number of inquiries from families and different community members that have shared feedback around what's working and what's not working well. And we're using that information to make sure that we are creating processes across the system that are coherent, that are clear, and that are normed across schools. So this concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Exton?
Thank you, Dr. Ford Walker, for your presentation. And I, some of my questions were answered, but I do want to just sort of reiterate some of the comments that I had made. I appreciate the presentation and a lot of, uh-oh, my mic, no. Okay. Is in response to the legislation. And sort of this is the expectation from the state for schools. But I think, and you did respond to this in the presentation tonight, but I think it's really important for all families to receive this information in a timely, in a timely manner. I think one is just fair. If we're assessing children, we should be telling their families what the results are. But I also think that the composite score doesn't always give the full picture. And families need to have an opportunity to see that and getting it when the progress reports come out, you know, three months after the assessment is. You know, there's a lot of time lost where maybe a lot of work has been done with that student, but families don't have that picture. So that was one of the things I wanted to mention. My other question is about the decision to administer the screener to kindergarteners twice a year and specifically why November and June? And the, are you using the beginning of the year benchmarks in November? Are you using the middle of the year benchmarks in November? Just thinking about what that, that looks like for kindergarteners and how those, how the results are going to present themselves to families.
Thank you, thank you for your question. And thank you for your feedback that you provided me. So in terms of your question about the kindergarteners, historically, November has been identified as the time to collect that data based on some of the beginning-of-the-year structures and systems that teachers and educators are attempting to introduce our kindergarteners to. And so there's been, I think, a really strong belief that students need that first couple of months to get used to just being in school and understanding what school is and understanding what systems and structures are. And so from my understanding, historically, November has been the marker that educators have found or our kindergarten educators have found as the ideal time to introduce these assessments to students. As part of the work that I'm currently undergoing, I'm looking at the timeframe that is being used to collect this data because I think that we can make some shifts in order to collect that data a little sooner.
Great, now I look forward to hearing how that, what you find and the outcomes and what you decide to do moving forward. And then final comment. I would just like to suggest that the communication around what is the DIBELS and what is it screening and what the results are telling families perhaps come from you or the ELA department. I just, it seems like principals were writing them and so different principals clearly had sort of different priorities or different things that they wanted to highlight. And so different families across town are getting a slightly different message about what, what it's screening for and what's going to happen next. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Gittleson?
I was, this is sort of repeating what Ms. Exton just said, but I was wondering if in the future, there could be, oh, thank you, sorry. More, I don't know if a family forum or some sort of opportunity where, rather than getting the information for the first time as you are receiving your scores and maybe those scores feel alarming or maybe they don't, sort of setting up expectations for parents or families? And I'm very glad we are working on getting it online because I don't think I'd actually mentioned this to Dr. Homan before, but mine got lost in the mail. So I, one of the people for whom the US Mail system was an ineffective way of getting my children's DIBELS scores. So fortunately, I got them from the school and I knew to ask for them. But if I had not known that, I just would never have had them. But thank you, that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and for adding in some of the additional information that I had requested. Still a couple of things. The letters that go out when somebody scores well below, do we, is that something that you've written? What does that look like?
Yes, so there are letters that do go out to students that are well below. And those letters are sent out by every school automatically. And those aren't adjusted, they're kind of the same letter. But what happens is when those meetings happen with the families of the students who are scoring in that particular category, the follow-up conversation is more specific to their need.
Right, so can we see, can we see that letter? You only linked to the initial screener?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Great. And then at those, so who participates in those meetings?
So it's the teacher that's participating. And then if there's any other staff member that's part of that particular child's plan in order to be successful in school, meaning a special educator or MLL instructor, they can also participate as well. But generally, it's the teacher and the parent or guardian.
So there's not necessarily the reading interventionist present?
That's someone also, in case, if a student is receiving Tier 2 or Tier 3, for example, instruction, yes, they would be participating as well.
Okay. Now, the state guidelines say that if somebody scores in the fifth percentile, they should automatically get Tier 3. Is that something we're doing?
I do not know if that is actually the case. I will look into that to make sure that's happening.
Yeah, it's not in the regulation, that's just in their suggested guidance. I think that's it for now. I mean, the state, the state does have what I thought were very well-written notices, the four different notices. I don't know if we utilize those or not. I think our initial notice is pretty vague. It doesn't really say much about what, you know, what the assessment is going to do, what the process is. The state version is actually more robust. So I would suggest we go back and think about making that notice a little bit more robust.
Thank you. Our review, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one more question then.
Go ahead.
Didn't want to take up too much time. So in the, in the sample score that you have in the presentation, where did that go? Close that, I mistake. If this student on the decoding subtest was in the yellow range, if, if, and this is getting pretty granular. I know you're not involved in the day-to-day operation of this. But if we had a student who fell in the red zone under decoding, but what otherwise was not in the well below, would that trigger anything other than the teacher, you know, adjusting their own practices?
Ideally, it would just trigger that and the teacher would be equipped to respond to what the specific need is. In terms of a student, let's say, receiving Tier 2 instruction, that's what the total composite score would tell us if that's what's needed. But ideally, the sub-score here is not used in isolation to make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add that they do then, after the administration at the grade level, we have grade-level team meetings that are data meetings. And so that grade-level team sits down with their literacy coach and reading specialist to look at all of those scores. So they are looking at those subtests. And even if your composite score was not, you know, in the red, you know, but there were some subtests, they are using that because actually those subtests allow us to target the instruction. The composite gives us an overall score, but it's the subtest that actually targets the intervention. So they use that to then make their intervention groups, whether like Dr. Ford Walker said, you might be getting a second dose in your classroom of foundations. You might be seeing a reading specialist is pulling that, but the grade-level teams look at that data through our data meetings.
Great, thank you.
And let me just ask one technical question. Assuming that the DIBELS scores are coming as a PDF, do we have the capacity to put that into Power School so that parents can access it that way? Oops.
So Power School was the initial portal that we looked into because it's, I think, the most easily accessible and often accessible, but that is not an option. So now we are left with looking at our other portal, which is Amplify.
Okay, okay, thank you. Oh, Dr. Allison, Dr. Allison Ampe's got her hand up, yes. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Thank you. You just asked one of my questions. I'm confused why, I'm wondering why we can't use Power School. But, because I'm worried, we're already asking people to use it for other things and I'm worried if we're sending them somewhere else that this is getting really messy. I mean, I think elementary student, elementary parents already have problems just connecting with the schools online with Power School. At least, that's been my impression in the past. So that's one question. But the second one is just for the students who are scoring well below. I understand we're rolling out online communication, but are we still going to mail out their reports next year? And I understand what Ms. Gittleson said, that the mail is not perfect either. But I'm worried that we don't want them to fall through the cracks.
So I'll start with your second question. Our primary form is going to be online access. Of course, there are going to be scenarios and cases where that will not work for a set of people in our, in our schools. And so what schools will do is have the names and have the families identified for who that does not work for. And they'll either have emailed if that works or then, if that doesn't work, then also receive a physical mailing through the US Mail. But our goal is to try to have the electronic version available and easily accessible. That brings me to your first question. I completely understand and realize that adding on another form of communication through a different portal may complicate things for folks, which is why we initially started with Power School. And it's a simple, I think is a simple problem and many others on the team think, which is essentially student ID numbers need to be listed and Power School doesn't have the platform available in a way where those, where number one, where the ID is listed on the report and that, where their software can pull that and put it into their particular platform. And so there have been requests from a number of districts around the country for this to actually take place because everyone is engaging in these conversations in various districts. And so the need is, you know, it's quite a large one. And so Power School themselves understands that and they're working on a fix. In the meantime, because we have no idea around the timeline for that, in the meantime, we need to pursue other options. And so the other option right now is looking at Amplify, which is a portal that families do have access to. We would have to, of course, look at the impact of using an Amplify and look at what that, you know, what complications that might add, such as password retrieval and all of the technical things, which are things that we're considering. But right now, I think the priority is to make sure that we can provide better access so that reports aren't getting lost in the mail or aren't received by families.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking around at your questions or comments. Hearing them, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which will be the superintendent's proposed budget. Superintendent Homan?
All right, folks. So I am pleased to be here to present the FY25 proposed budget. I am joined by Jose Farias, who is our Assistant Director of Finance. We, I just want to sort of explain kind of why we're here, when we're here, taking a look at the FY25 proposed budget. Mr. Mason had a little one not too long ago and went on a parental leave and has since also informed us that he will be joining Chelsea, the city of Chelsea, as the deputy town manager or city manager before too long. And so Mr. Farias and I, along with Leanne Wilsinski, who's a consultant who's helping us out and is on the Zoom, have been working diligently on the FY25 budget with a little bit of help from Mr. Mason, which has delayed us a little bit, three weeks, in getting this proposed budget to you. So I want to thank you, first of all, for your patience as we worked on this. We've had a lot of meetings with Budget Subcommittee and are pleased to bring you our plan for FY25. So with that said, I'll get into it. Our budget priorities for FY25 are as follows. The first priority, obviously, was to make sure that we funded the override competitive compensation commitments that we talked to voters about at length as we headed into the fall voting season. We were really excited about that override being passed and are dedicated to making sure that we set aside funds and resources to meet the commitments of that, of that override. We wanted to make sure we, we left aside adequate funds for what will be a 40% projected increase in electricity supply rates. This is happening all over the country, all over the This is happening all over the country, all over the Commonwealth, and is having a pretty significant impact on the FY25 budget. We're adjusting elementary staffing levels because we have decreasing enrollments, but we want to make sure that we sustain existing service levels and even add resources in particular areas that will benefit our focal groups. We're maintaining our staffing to support needs in special education and expanding our, and what we know are expanding secondary enrollments. We've also made some prior investments in secondary enrollments that I will try to highlight. And we're, of course, continuing our implementation of the five-year strategic plan and making sure that we're maintaining our focus on focal groups, which I'll talk about in just a moment. I want to start by highlighting our 10-year district enrollment trends. So what you see here is a graph that should be relatively familiar to those of you on the committee and to folks who have seen some of our presentations to the town. The blue line is our actual enrollment from FY18 until now, and then you see also a projection up to FY28. The other lines are different projections that we've received from different organizations, as well as an internal projection. That's the gray line, and that's the line we primarily use to project sections because it's the one that has proven the most consistent. What you'll see is that we are trending along that gray line, but we're slightly below where we had projected our enrollments for this fiscal year, fiscal '24. The purple lines are two projections that we got from Decision Insight a couple of years ago, and the orange line was a projection that we got prior to the pandemic from McKibben. So you can see the dip in enrollment, and then you can see the trend moving upwards and also starting to level out, which is where we're at now. I want to speak a little bit about our focal group populations. If you recall, there are five focal groups identified in the strategic plan, and I'm going to talk about kind of what's happening with the populations of those focal groups in Arlington Public Schools because I think it's important for thinking about how we're allocating resources. So one of the focal groups is students who identify as BIPOC, particularly students who identify as Black or African-American, and students who identify as Hispanic or multiracial. So we have stable populations of students who are identifying as Black or African-American or Asian right now in the system, but we have a steadily increasing population of students who are identifying as Hispanic or multirace, non-Hispanic over the past five years. So our population for that focal group is going up. We also have steadily increasing populations of English learners and students for whom English is not their first language and families, a steadily increasing population of students with IEPs, students from income insecure households or low-income households, and students who identify as non-binary. That's that lower green line. I just want to note that it's not surprising that this line is going up, and we don't feel that it's representative necessarily of all of the students who might be identifying as non-binary because this is really new data. It's very recent that we're even capturing it, as you can see, because it was not even represented in 2019 at all. And that's because it wasn't collected. And what I want to highlight in highlighting the focal groups is that a number of these focal groups also are captured in high-needs populations. And I think what's perhaps most telling is this trend, which is that APS has a steadily increasing population of students whose needs are requiring additional material resources, additional support, additional staffing. Those resources absolutely are required in order for us to meet our five-year strategic plan goals. And so this line shows APS students who are identified as high-needs, which is an aggregate calculation, is one you see a lot in the school improvement plans because we sometimes have smaller populations of some of the other focal groups, but this will capture more of our students because it puts some of these focal needs together. And that population has been very steadily increasing since 2019 in Arlington. So I will get into the nuts and bolts of some of our numbers for FY25 because everything I just shared is driving some of our calculations. This is a projection of revenue by funding sources from FY21 through the upcoming year. What you'll notice here is that Chapter 70 funds and town contributions continue to increase. The COVID-19 grants have expired in FY25, so are no longer a source of revenue. And there's a gap that is a little bit growing between what Chapter 70 contributes and what town contributes. However, that gap decreased this year because our Chapter 70 allocation was significantly lower than anticipated. This is FY25 funding sources across all of our funds. Again, you'll notice that the COVID-19 revenues are no longer represented there. Circuit Breaker is contributing 2.1% to revenue. Special Revenue to 1.9, that's our revolving account. Grants, 3.2%, and our Town Appropriation is larger than it has been in previous years at almost 93%. This table represents our FY25, it should say at the top, sorry about that, proposed budget expenses by category. What you will notice is that there is a change overall in various categories here, a change in 11% increase for special education, a change of $7,173,999 across all accounts. And I just want to note that there is a new category here of contingencies, and that is a net of funding to be used to support competitive compensation and our budget additions and efficiencies that we haven't yet identified in Position Control because there are positions that are being potentially eliminated, but we don't quite know yet because of the time of year which positions exactly those will be. Also, the $400,000 in budget contingencies for FY24, if you recall, are funds that will be allocated by the town as part of some of the conversations we're having with long-range planning to support competitive compensation, but have not yet been allocated towards salaries. These are our anticipated funding sources and how they break out across the long-range plan for this fiscal year. And I want to talk about the proposed budget changes across the FY25 budget. So we'll start with contractual obligations and salary adjustments. Overall, APS will spend $3,853,151 more dollars on our contractual obligations and as a result of salary adjustments in FY25 than we did in FY24. We're setting aside a significant allocation for collective, for the purposes of collective bargaining with Unit A, about $1.7 million, or $1,699,000. There is a line here that represents the Unit D FY25 increase that I want to explain a little bit. It's $344,457. And what this represents is the increases in salaries for Unit D employees compared against the original contractual agreement, but correcting for the $400,000 allocation that will happen in FY24 because that goes into the base. So the overall difference between what we would have paid in FY25 for Unit D, for the increase to Unit D under the original agreement, and what we will pay is actually $744,457. But if you correct that for the $400,000 that's going into the base budget, then you arrive at the $344,000 investment because it's offset by that $400,000. So if you put $1.7 million together with $344,000, you arrive at about $2 million, which was the commitment that we made in the override to contributing to salary adjustments and competitive compensation for our educators in Unit A and Unit D. So that's what those two lines.
For the people home, Unit D is?
Oh, sorry. Unit D is our paraprofessionals, and Unit A is our teachers. There is a $436,000 allocation to support utility increases, as I mentioned, because our supply rates are going up, about a 2% adjustment up in departmental budgets, and then some efficiencies and additions that I will talk about in just a moment. I want to take a few minutes to talk about our SER III assessment and what we're going to choose to adopt and what we will be sort of moonlighting and saying, we're not going to necessarily keep this in the FY25 budget. We're going to sunset that and not bring it in. So maintained from SER III, our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Specialist is an addition that we had in our SER dollars and is part of our COVID-19 grants, and we'll maintain that in the system. Our Director of Research, Data, and Accountability was an addition this year that we will also be keeping. We have an Arlington High School, that should say Assistant Director of School Counseling, and a Communications Specialist at the district level at the FTE rate of .6. So the reason we're keeping some of these things is to make sure that we're increasing our administrative support at Arlington High School. There are an increasing number of students at Arlington High School. And when we thought about the fact that there would be required administrative additional support dedicated to that school, we wanted to focus on making sure that that was supporting student mental health and the counseling services that we provide to our students. We are trying to increase our capacity to maintain functional data systems, as you've seen in several presentations this year. We'd also like to make sure that in future years, data, our Research, Data, and Accountability Department is providing reports directly to teachers, helping us make sure that we get reports out to families. So that team has really been instrumental in helping us think about what the connections could be to families and getting those reports out, such as our DIBL scores. And we want to maintain that work, and we want to increase support for professional learning and our consistency of communications to families and staff when it comes to communications with families. And so that's why we're maintaining those from SER III. We're also eliminating a few positions from what we had used those SER III dollars for this year. So we'll be eliminating the Director of Leadership Development on Boarding, who you had heard from previously, not because we don't think that that work is exceptionally important, but because we knew that the whole point of that role was to build some systems, to build some plans, to leave us some recommendations that we would then embed in the capacity of the existing system. We've done some work looking at liaison structures for families, and we had piloted a family liaison at Gibbs this year. We are wanting to reassess that liaison model, work directly with the Welcome Center and think about ways that we can do that, both efficiently and in ways that increase the capacity of our educators to work with families. And we're not sure that the system's going to be able to sustain full-time liaisons at every school. So we want to take a look at that model and think about what alternatives we could consider. And then for Communications Specialist, we had put a full-time, but it's shared between two staff members, and so we're going to eliminate .4 of that support from the SER III grant and not pull that over into the general fund. So I want to name a few commitments that we had made previously that are maintained in this budget because I think it's easy not to see some of those. We've been, because we had additional revenues, because we had other funds available in previous years, we've been preemptively planning for what we knew would be increasing secondary enrollments. So there are some commitments that were made in previous budget years using a combination of funds that we're keeping in this budget and that I want to name specifically as things were sustaining because they come at a resource cost and have an impact on those contractual obligations that we have. So we added 6.2 positions in the FY24 budget to Arlington High School. Those were teachers, paraprofessionals, a theater manager, other positions that were linked to the opening of the new high school. Wings, we added almost four 3.9 positions at OMS and Gibbs in the FY24 budget, including an expansion of the team chair role and various teacher positions. We've added LC at OMS in '22 and '23. We did half of the LC in FY22, the other half in FY23. And that was to support what we knew were going to be growing enrollments over the next couple of years. We also expanded some specialist staff at OMS last year, knowing that those sections would be getting bigger over the next year or two. We've added staff and sections at Gibbs in FY23 because we had one of the bigger class sizes going to Gibbs in FY23, and we've maintained that staffing level. So that will support another increase in the student population at Gibbs next school year in FY25. Our Monotomy Paraprofessional shifted to the SSP pay rate in FY24, and that will be maintained in the new Unit D agreement and is another investment that we've made in our Unit D paraprofessionals. And in this budget in FY25, we're maintaining elementary class sizes at under 25 students per section. So while there are reductions at the elementary level due to enrollments, we're making sure we sustain both the service rate, so we're not eliminating any special education positions, for example, or any ML positions, multilingual learner positions, only the class section levels, which actually comes at a service increase if you think about the fact that there are fewer students that our special educators and other service providers will be providing for. So all of those commitments are sustained in FY25. So here are some of the efficiencies that we're considering. What you'll see here is a total of five classroom teachers. It's actually a total of six sections from FY24 to FY25 that are being reduced. It's six because we added a kindergarten section in FY24 after the budget that we're now not including in FY25. So that's why that sixth section is not included on this list, as well as the paraprofessional that comes along with that section. It's just sort of net neutral because it wasn't in FY24 to begin with, and this is a budget-to-budget comparison. We're eliminating about 1.0 in PE specialists due to the number of sections and the number of specialists that we need in order to provide the number of special sections of PE that we provide for students on a weekly basis. We are reducing one curriculum specialist at the district level. We currently have three of those. An instructional coach at the district level that is tied to mathematics, and that's at the middle school level, and a library paraprofessional role at about the level of .2 that we had had to support some of the specialist coverage at the elementary level. The library paraprofessionals would occasionally teach classes with a reduction in sections, may not need to teach as many of those special classes. So that's a total budget efficiency level of 8.2 FTEs or $567,000. And here are our additions. I want to name something explicitly about these additions in that these additions, while they are additions from FY24 to FY25, a number of them won't necessarily be felt insofar as they're already here. So most of these additions have come after the budget. These are positions that already exist within the system, and we're, like I said, sustaining them. So first is a classroom, this is the only one that that is not true for, a new classroom teacher and specialized support paraprofessional at Monotomy Preschool because Monotomy is adding a classroom because they are now in their new space. I knew this was a major priority for a number of committee members, and we want to make sure that Monotomy can take in as many students as possible because of the importance of that early education for our students. We are adding, we are keeping the following positions. We added an inclusion specialist after the FY24 budget at Thompson. We're maintaining that. We will have some larger class sizes still at Thompson because of the limitations of space, though I am working on buffer zone strategy that will help us swing, hopefully, some students out of that zone so that we can reduce some of the enrollments there. We had added a BCBA full-time at Stratton, and we're actually backfilling that at the district level. And so that's an addition of 1.0 so that Stratton, with the SLC program that is there, can have the full-time support of a board-certified behavior analyst. We are also adding three specialized support paraprofessionals we actually already have at Stratton to support the SLC there. We've added various one-to-one teaching assistants for students as needed as per their IEPs over the course of the year in special education, specialized support paraprofessional at Arlington High School to support one of the programs, a tutor at Arlington High School that runs the Learning Center and is available to students for Tier Two support on any homework that they might need, and is there actually also running some student-level tutoring where students can help their peers with their homework, which is a great addition to the Arlington High School cadre of services that they're providing. We've added two custodians at Arlington High School since the opening of the new wing. We haven't been able to fill those positions yet, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to before too long. That's 2.0. The 3.6 positions from the SER III allocation that I already mentioned, and an administrative assistant for the District Welcome Center because we moved over here, we need to make sure that people can access the building, can get in. And that role is also serving the Welcome Center as an administrative assistant and the Department of Equity, Belonging, Inclusion, and Justice in an administrative capacity. So that's total budget additions of $19.2, or $1,147,748.99. I do want to name a few future additions if funds allow for it when we are at the conclusion of collective bargaining and as we continue to work on funds for FY24. Should funds become available or should we have savings from vacancies, which is a possibility, a reality, something that we've had over the past several years, then there are a few things we could consider funding if there are resources available. One is additional clerical support for special education department. This was a request that came through and something that I think would greatly benefit that department in making sure that we're meeting timelines and getting all of the paperwork that comes along with those requirements completed. Potentially, special education liaisons or service providers. We had a number of requests for that as well in our requests for this year. Elementary librarians was a major priority that we would consider funding if funds would allow for it. Custodial support across the district has been a challenge, so we might take a look at that as well. Social workers were requested in a number of sites across the system, and reading, additional reading intervention support was also requested. So should we have the funds available? We will come back to some of those requests that were top of mind for many of you and for us and see what we can put into the FY25 budget at the conclusion of our planning and finalization of that budget. We have a few remaining steps left, as you all know. We have a school committee meeting for a public hearing in a couple of weeks. One week after that, a tentative date to approve the proposed budget. Finance Committee, we will be visiting on March 25, and town meeting opens in April. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the members of the committee? Ms. Gittleson?
I was, this is my first budget season, so looking, going through the, all of the line items and cost centers was a challenge. And I'm wondering, you spoke to this a little bit, if it's possible for us, me, and the people at home, if there's a way to get a breakdown of where and how we spend our special education budget? There's a lot of interest right now in, you know, different services that people need, and I think it would be helpful to understand how, you know, are the, you know, reading specialists versus? helpful to understand how, you know, are the, you know, reading specialists versus evaluations versus legal fees. I know this might not be able to be answered tonight, but I do think having that kind of information would be really helpful for me and for other members of the public.
I can't answer with specificity right now, but I can say that the vast majority of our funding for special education goes towards positions in that department. As you can see, most of our investments for FY '25 are on positions in that department, and there is about a $2.5 million increase in special education funds for FY '25. How that all breaks out, I'd have to work with Ms. Elmer and the Finance Department to sort of get a little bit more fine detail for you on.
Okay. And I also just wanted to reiterate my, the idea of if money becomes available, the priority to be placed on adding the elementary school librarians.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Mr. Thielman?
I just want some clarification. On the ask for the high school regarding the building, so there's two custodians, there's the manager of the, of the theater, that, so those are the three kind of?
So there were some other additions in FY '24 that, like, somebody to manage the cafe and to work directly with the students on getting the cafe up and running, which it sounds like it is, which is fantastic. And the, also the, there's a copy center upstairs, so there was an FTE associated with that. It was an SSP FTE in FY '24. And there's, so there's the theater manager, which we added in FY '24. The biggest concern that has come from the opening of the second wing has been around custodial support.
Right, okay. And so that's?
That's what we're prioritizing.
That's prioritizing, should funds become available. Okay. All right. Thank you.
But there's two custodians that we haven't filled yet.
Correct. They were posted in FY '24, added in FY '24 after the '24 budget, but they haven't been filled yet.
Right. But those are, but those, Jeff, those are part of the FY '25 budget, for sure.
Yes.
I get that.
Yeah, okay.
But you would be adding more than that, should funding become?
Should funding become available, that's on the list. I would say probably below a couple of the other things we've talked about. One of the challenges that we have with custodians at the high school in particular is that when there is an absence at another school of another custodian, we will often pull from the high school because they have the most custodians. But what that means with a building this big is that on a day like that, which is almost every day, you have some absence somewhere, then you're short-staffed at the high school. So that is additional to at the high school will make a big difference.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carden?
I just wanted to point out, there is a schedule in the budget on special education interventions.
Yes.
One of the many schedules.
Yeah, no, and I'm sort of working my way through it, but to translate to that, to what is happening in reality.
Yeah, okay.
If there are specific questions about them, Ms. Gittleson, and you want to reach out to myself and Ms. Elmer, we can search it out for you.
Seeing no further comments?
Dr. Allison Eppi.
Oh, Dr. Allison Eppi. I was looking for a little hand icon. Okay.
Okay, so first, I know when we were talking through how we're going to do this budget, we had discussed potentially having a budget subcommittee meeting next week, which has not yet been scheduled. And I just want to reiterate my hope that we would do that, and we invite any, okay, I'm not chair of that committee, so I can't actually say that, but I expect the chair would invite anyone, any of the other school committee members who have questions or comments about the budget to come. And then, second, I just wanted, Dr. Homan, I appreciate all the hard work that you and Mr. Furus and all the other people have put into this. Looking through the budget, we've used the same messaging for the first parts, and it continues to have things which I personally feel are errors. And I guess, in addition to my little hand, I'm stomping my little foot, and I am going to share with you what I think those are, and perhaps some suggestions for different wording. It's things, let me, sorry, I'm on the wrong page. I'm away at this, I'm way at the start. It's things, for example, concerning Chapter 70 and the way the information is written in the budget book, it suggests that the town basically is a pass-through for Chapter 70. And as we all know, we're, as members of the Long Range Planning Committee and actually all school committee members now, because we've been working on the override, know that's not how it works here. All the money comes into a big pot, it gets stirred up together, and then the town dumps out money. You know, yes, it's an interesting and important amount to be keeping track of, how much Chapter 70 we're getting, but it's not, you know, it could go to zero, and the town would still be, hopefully, fulfilling their obligation to us. And I'm just, there's things like that in the messaging at the start, and I'd just like to get some of those cleaned up, or at least have that discussion. And if I get overruled, I get overruled, but it just, it concerns me that it's giving the wrong impression to our families. And then when we have to do things like override, that starts getting, they start from a position of confusion, which isn't helpful. So that's all for right now. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? With that, we move forward to superintendent's update.
Okay, one second. Nope. Hold on. Technical difficulties. Okay. All right. So our, a number of our AHS students went to Quebec over the February break, and they wanted to say a special thank you to school committee for approving that trip. That's a picture of them enjoying the very, very cold weather, I heard. It was freezing. But they had a grand time and sent a lot of pictures back with them, and we're really excited about this inaugural opportunity to visit Quebec. I have a few updates on administrative searches. We are currently in the process of, well, we have actually identified finalists, and we're planning on announcing those as soon as we can, hopefully Monday. And then we'll be running some finalist rounds through next week and probably into the following week, and then identifying the principal for the Hardy School very soon and announcing that as well. We have some upcoming searches, one for K-12 math director. If you recall, our former math director moved into the data and accountability roles. We have an interim in place right now. We also have an interim Metco director in place right now, so we'll be doing a search for that permanent position. And right now, as noted, we are currently looking for and are posted for an interim CFO, and/or we will be running a search for Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations in the absence of Mr. Mason, who we will miss very much. I have a small kindergarten registration update with more data on this to come very soon. As of yesterday, we have 152 kindergartners approved, 148 kindergartners pending, and 300 total in the queue to be registered for next school year. As indicated in the kindergarten letter, they, the sort of deadline to apply for first consideration around buffer zones was up until the 28th, and so I'll be sending buffer zone assignments super soon, as soon as we have all of these applications sort of organized in a way that I can assign buffer zones, prioritizing some swoop away from East Arlington in buffer zone assignments. And then we'll get that back out to families so that they can make decisions about things like after-school care. So we try to coordinate the after-school care with kindergarten registration launch. So that's kindergarten registration update. I do want to note that your enrollments don't reflect actual numbers yet for kindergarten, but I'm hoping that the next time I send enrollment data, that'll reflect the actuals for kindergarten. So right now, you're still working with a projection in the enrollment data that I sent along. I have a quick athletics update for the winter season. The wrestling team won their sixth consecutive Middle Sex League Division Championship and MIA Division One Metro Central Sectional Championship. The boys hockey team won the Middle Sex League Championship, highest-ranked public school in the Division One State Tournament, very exciting. Girls hockey qualified for the state tournament. Boys basketball won the Middle Sex League Championship for the second straight year. Nordic ski competed in their first-ever state championship meet. Girls track finished third at the Middle Sex League meet. Both boys and girls track had a lot of students can meet at sectionals and state as well. Boys swimming finished second at the Middle Sex League meet. Gymnastics finished sixth at the Middle Sex League meet and qualified for sectionals for the first time in over 10 years, as they've already gotten shouted out, yay. And the Alpine ski team had another successful season with three students qualifying for the state meet. As, and there were a lot of other successes in the, in the season as well, but these are just a few of the highlights from the winter season. And I also provided your enrollments. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, we're ready to go to the policies for second read. We are pulling off of the list BEDH and JLCD, which were referred to council, and we're holding KDC because we need to assure that we have the technical capacity to do that. So if there are any requests to pull anything off the list beyond those three, I'll entertain any questions about that. Hearing none, then I would go and present, ask for a motion to adopt the remaining policies on second read.
Can you say the third one that you were pulling?
We're pulling KDC.
Okay, sorry.
KDC, which sort of requires a little pop-up. We don't have the technical capacity to do that right now. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll look.
Just the ones you're pulling, the ones you're pulling in?
Yeah.
We are, we are removing, we are pulling BEDH and JLCD, which were referred to council.
Okay.
And KDC, which for reasons of the technology, other than that, all the rest are ready to go, should the committee choose to adopt them.
And when you say council, it's town council.
Town council, yeah.
I move approval of the remaining motions.
Okay, motion by Mr. Thielman, second by Ms. Gittleson. Any other comment? Then it's roll call. Dr. Allison Eppi?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
And I vote on the affirmative. That's a seven-nothing vote. 750, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in this normal sequence. Warrant 24209 on the amount of $547,377.77 dated February 21st. An Arlington School Committee Draft Regular Meeting minutes February 9, 2024. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Exton, second by?
Second.
Mr. Thielman, roll call vote. Dr. Allison Eppi?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
And I vote on the affirmative. That's a seven-nothing vote. Subcommittee and liaison reports and announcements. Budget, Mr. Carden?
We've met a couple times to talk about progress on the budget book. We will try to schedule a meeting next week to receive any feedback on the draft budget book ahead of the hearing. We do have a meeting scheduled on the 12th, like of the day before the hearing, which is not going to be very helpful, so the 13th. So we'll try to get one scheduled for next week. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Exton, Community Relations?
Thank you. There was a school committee chat hosted on Tuesday, February 27th that was well-attended. There are notes from the chat, thank you, Ms. Morgan, for taking those, are in Novus. The next school committee chat is on Saturday, April 6, at 11:00 a.m., which I also believe is Election Day. And that will just be school committee members. I think there was some confusion from some members of the community about the school committee chats and who would be there. And the subcommittee had decided to try having administration attend as well to provide some more instant and direct feedback and answer some questions. But we also had feedback from committee members that having chats that just have school committee members would also be helpful. So the next one on Saturday, April 6, will just have school committee members. And I think that's all there is to report.
Okay, thank you. Facilities, Mr. Thielman?
No report.
Policies and procedures, Mr. Schlickman?
No report.
Our Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman?
Where we meet next Tuesday.
Oh, wonderful. Liaison?
Schlickman, the CIA Subcommittee will be meeting.
Ah, CIA, yeah, yeah.
Well, you know.
You hide over there in the corner.
Please make it about me.
Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Accountability, Ms. Morgan?
Yes, we are meeting on Monday, the 18th, at 2:00.
Okay. Your meetings are always wonderful.
So I've been told.
Liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Any announcements? Then we are proceeding to future agenda items. Any future agenda items? Hearing none, executive session. We will be looking to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted with AEA, Unit A negotiations, and to discuss the deployment of security personnel and/or devices or strategies with respect to their two. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Thielman?
Second.
Second by Ms. Exton. Roll call vote. Dr. Allison Eppi?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
And I vote on the affirmative. That is a seven-nothing vote. We are entering executive session, and we will not return to a public session thereafter. Thank you.